Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hello, everyone. Really glad you're here today.
We are also glad to have our favorite Canadian Colin here today. What's up Colin?
How you doing everyone?
Hey, how are you guys doing in the chat? Come on in, say hello, let us know where you're coming in from and tell us if we are going to see you at Aroma Sharing and Convention next week. Really excited about that, to see all these familiar faces and meet new ones if I haven't met you in person yet. And of course, give you guys great big hugs and high fives. Julie and I are going to be over at our table. Get Oiling is the sponsor at Aroma Sharing, so if you are going to be there, soon as you walk in the room, you will see us, you can't miss us. And we've got some really fun stuff planned, so make sure you come by and you're gonna want to bring your friends. Not gonna tell you why, but you're gonna love it when you find out. Alright, so let's get into this. Hello, welcome Philly, Alabama. Oh, that's where I'm from Kathy, Germany. Hey guys, excited to have you here. Keep it going in the chat. We are gonna pop out a video, get into some slides. We got a lot to get into here today and boy, are we just so excited to see you guys next week in Salt Lake City. Alright, so today we are talking about content repurposing. We're talking about not starting over when it's time to show up, a way for you to stay visible. Because that is a key important thing that a lot of us need to spend more time on, right? That's providing a presence for ourselves, for our brand, for people to find us, become curious, so that those people can become our next customers. And part of the issue with showing up frequently is that it takes time and it takes creativity. And these things can take a lot out of us, especially when you've got a lot of other stuff going on. Whether that's taking care of your existing customers and team, or just, you know, living your life, right? So today, we are gonna talk about why content matters for brand partners. Even if you don't see yourself as a creative or as a content creator, as a brand partner, if you want to consistently find more people to share young living with, you gotta show up where your people are, and that means content. So we're gonna get into that today. We're gonna talk about how you can take one idea and turn it into many. We're gonna multiply without starting from scratch. We're gonna go through some simple repurposing formats that'll help you to boost your reach and build connection with more people who again, could become your future customers. We're gonna go through a three-step system to turn one post into five. And we'll talk about your plan to stay visible without burning out. Because again, this really is an endeavor to stay present the majority of the time. But we don't want to necessarily stay active and be on social media and writing blog posts and all of this stuff all the time. That's not the most profitable way to run your business, but we do have to figure out a way to strike a balance. And then of course, as always, we will get into live help and Q and A. That's what these live calls are for every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time. If you're here today and you have questions, please go ahead and add those to the Q and A here on the live call. Quick note, while we're here, we will be in Salt Lake City next week and therefore will not have a live session. However, I want you to make sure you check out next week's training because I've pre-recorded it for you. And it's a doozy, don't miss out, right? So you're gonna have an opportunity to watch that next week when we release it. Details in your inbox. If you aren't getting those details in your inbox, go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. We're gonna give you all the updates on these calls, send you the replay, send you the resources like the Trello board. We're gonna be talking about here today that's totally free and will change your life in terms of content. And if you'd like to work together on a call like this one in the future, getoiling.com/website review is where you want to go. And if you'd like to hand off any project that you have with your Get Oiling system to someone who knows how to do it well and get it done to your specs. You can go and meet with them and get a quote. Getoiling.com/concierge is where you can go to meet our team and get started on your next big project. Now, before I get into today's content, I'm seeing questions. Who is here in the chat that is ready to know about Momentum? Right? You've heard about it, you're curious about it, maybe you've got some questions. Alright, so I want to go ahead. I've already seen this showing up in the chat here now. For those of you watching the replay, don't worry, we are about to get into the training and everybody who's here to watch this training. I want to make sure that you understand, we're gonna be getting into that content here in just a couple of minutes. But first, let's get into this. Alright, oh my gosh, there's so many me's. Like, is that everybody? It's everybody here. Alright, so Momentum. How many of you guys, maybe just a quick show of hands, have attended a training before hoping to make a dramatic difference in how you show up in your business? Just pop your hand up, tell me if this is you. You went to a training, you got really excited, maybe it was convention. Maybe it was one of the trainings that we've held, maybe it's one of the many different programs that we've offered over the years where we teach you how to do stuff, right? Have you been to something with big dreams of what it can do for you? And you're excited and you're clear, you know what the steps are, but you walk away and everything deflates. Nothing happens, right? You know you could go back and re-watch it, you know you could go back and see what needs to be done. But it just doesn't get done, right? Maybe it's because you run into a little hiccup or confusion and nobody is there next to you to help redirect you, to help guide you, right? To help bring you back on track. Okay? So we've all been there. This is familiar, right? Say yes in the chat, you've been there, you have watched something, it could be something that we've done here with Get Oiling. You could have gone and gotten really excited from a training, from a leader, I'm gonna go do this, but then you're off on your own trying to get it done. And we just stop, right? Okay, so I know that you, if you're here today, you're dedicated. You spend time on yourself to grow yourself, because you know growing yourself grows your young living business. And I also know that many of you have shown up to calls like these, to trainings that I've done before. And you might not have the things in place that you sat down and learned about. And the primary reason why is because you still, like if it's me training on the video or me training in the course or whatever. If I'm not there with you when you're going to do the action later and you've got questions, you stop. You don't push through. Now, a rare red personality might just, you know, blow through it and that's fine, y'all are coded differently, right? But for the majority of us, that is the bottleneck. So what I want you to realize is that we have a complete system to help you sign up one, two, three, four or more customers every single week and for you to keep them for life, right? We've talked about, I have free trainings on ways to do this, but how many of us are consistently actually enrolling one, two, three, four new customers every single week? We're not, right? So we have to get into the action. And so this is where Momentum is different. It's about doing it together, right? So here, we're going to go through the systems that attract your leads, right? That keep you visible, that get your leads turned into customers and that keep your customers for life. And we do this, and these are the systems that we cover. We get you out in front of people in a consistent way. So if you're somebody who's interested in content like we're talking about here today, these systems are locked and loaded and you have support to execute them. This journey to yes, this is all about how you take your conversations to customers. This loyalty loop is all about how you keep your customers for life. And really critically, it's how you keep balance in doing all of these things. It's how you not only do it once, but these become instituted in your business as systems that run on repeat and work every day of every year, right? Without you necessarily having to show up every day of every year. Now, what Momentum does differently, and this is really the kicker that you need to know about. This isn't just some course that I'm going to give you, where you can go and learn something and then go do something. This is a half-day workshop where we're going to sit down together and get all of the systems in place. So if you've ever struggled with getting that tech thing finished, right? So that you have your booking done. Or if you have, you know, a desire to create a thing that fits the bill here with what we're doing and you get stuck. And so you don't move forward. This half-day workshop is all about setup, right? So Alison, this is different from Bootcamp. So Bootcamp, we just met once a week last year. For the last couple of years, we met once a week and I guided you through some things, right? I guided you through actions to take. This is hands-on. We're going to meet for a half-day workshop where we're going to, you're gonna be in your Get Oiling system and I'm gonna be walking through at the same time. And if you can't move forward, I'm going to stop and I'm going to fix the thing in your system, right? This is, nothing holds you back. We leave this call, you have everything in place to be able to do exactly what you need to do, moving forward to get all these systems in place. That's how this is different from Bootcamp. We are meeting and getting it all out of the way. There will be no tech hills for you to climb because we're going to move over them together. And then you'll have access to some videos that will help reinforce the things that you need to be doing on a regular basis. There'll be pop-in office hours, so if you need to come and hop on a call to get a quick question answered, that's available. And there will be accountability coaching that we're following through once a month. My goal, depending on how all this rolls out with everyone, is that we do this quarterly. And so this means that we've got accountability ongoing in perpetuity, but at the very least, you're going to get access here for three months, right? So we're gonna have a half-day workshop, we get everything set up, you understand the systems that you need to have in place to enroll that many customers per week, right? For you to be able to confidently close in your conversations to use Get Oiling exactly as you're supposed to, to get all of this done. And of course, you've got access to all of this other support in here. So what I would like for you guys to do, team, if you could pop the link into the chat here. If you guys have questions beyond that, if you want to check them out, if you want to learn a little bit more about the specifics of what's included here. You can come over to this site, to this page. We have early bird pricing right now. This price is going to go up this weekend, right? This is just for you guys. This is for people who have been with us, right? This is our special thing to you. This is going to go up after Sunday, right? Because once we get into convention week, this is going to change. So this is $97 right now, 97 for all of this half-day workshop, curriculum, weekly office hours, monthly coaching calls. Literally zero excuse to not have the systems that you want in place, moving forward to get the results that you want and the support to get you there. $97. Alright, so take advantage of this. This price is going to go up on Sunday. So do make sure that you move forward with that. Desiree, this is not about websites. You do have a built-in website in your system. I can address that briefly in here, but this is about action. And how you show up is really more about how you're putting yourself out there consistently. I can address this again briefly, but I'm not going to be teaching website development in this, because that's not how you create momentum in your brand partner business. And yes, Lacey, if you bring new Get Oiling customers, so if someone on your team gets started with Get Oiling during this promo, I will put them into Momentum with you. So we'll have to go and like validate that that person is, you know, signed up and that they signed up through you. Be sure if your person signs up, that you maybe send a message to our team and let them know that I referred this person. Can you make sure that that reflects that? And before we get started, I will make sure that the people that you have brought into Get Oiling with you during this period are going to be able to join with you. Because I want your team, if you have people who are truly serious about growing their business and they're willing to invest in themselves to get started by getting a Get Oiling system. I want to make sure your team can do this with you, because accountability really is key for getting this stuff done. Alright, so another thing that I want to make sure that you know, if you are new here, if you haven't gotten started with Get Oiling yet, if you're still considering this. And maybe this is a link that you might want to share with your team. If you are interested in sharing Get Oiling with your team during this promotion, this is the best time of year to get started with Get Oiling. This website, team, if we could pop this in, this Aroma Sharing specials. This is going to walk you through everything that Get Oiling has, right? Of course, those of you who have Get Oiling, you know this, you get this. But for your people and for those of us who are here and considering getting started with Get Oiling, these are all the bonuses that you're going to get access to when you get started with Get Oiling today. You could start for a dollar for your first month and get loads of bonuses. You're getting all kinds of things that you don't get any other time of year, including two-way texting, your own domain name, extra marketing credits per month for life. So many things that we're adding in here just to sweeten the deal to get started from, you know, during this time with Aroma Sharing and Convention. So down here at the bottom of the page, we've got details on everything that we have here for folks who are already with us. Brand Launch Essentials is back as well. If you would like your website done, this is $450 and you get your entire website done and three calls with our experts. So if you are interested in getting a custom website and you want to get that out of the way, this is your solution to getting that done. And if you want to build that momentum in your business that consistently signs up one to four customers every week and keeps them for life, Momentum is what you want to check out right now. That is $97. And by the way, you get extra entries into Win Rose Oil as one of our existing customers. When you refer your friends, your team to Get Oiling, and you can click the link that's down at the bottom of this page to learn how to share Get Oiling, that'll take you to an article on the Get Oiling site that shows you how to share. Alison says, if we got someone to start with Get Oiling, they can join Momentum. No. So Alison, if you sign up for Momentum, right? You're signed up for Momentum, you've paid $97. If you've got team that you want to come along, all they have to do is get their own Get Oiling account during that period of time via your referral. You refer your friends, they can just come with you. So consider that 97 payment for you and your team. But your team does need to use a Get Oiling account to be able to participate in Momentum. So they will not have to also pay for Momentum. You will be bringing your team with you. That's how that will work. And again, that's limited. Right now, we've got through Sunday that $97 promo. So do please make sure that you check out these two links, the one that has all the Aroma Sharing and Convention specials. Check out the Brand Launch Essentials if you're interested in getting your website done for you. And of course, we can't wait to see you guys there in person at Aroma Sharing and at Convention. Alright, so let's get into this content, you guys. How many of us are creating content every week, every day? What does that look like for you? Are you posting on Instagram? Are you active on places like LinkedIn? Are you writing, are you writing blog posts? What does that look like for you? So let me know in the chat. Got one more question through here. Carrie, what does it cost for a new person to get Get Oiling right now? You could get started for a dollar for your first month. And our plans range from under 10 US dollars for our seed plan, which they can have, right? All the way up through the more loaded plans that are over a hundred dollars a month that are gonna be more for, you know, your very, very large team leaders, people with big lists. Alright, so Courtney Lee is doing blog posts, video, Instagram. Desiree's not doing much yet. Paula's doing podcasts, blog posts, Pinterest pins. Love it. Alright, so we've got a good range here. So content is really important, even if you don't consider yourself a creator. Because at the end of the day, people buy from those they know, like and trust, right? That's the reason why Young Living pays you. They're borrowing the trust that you have with your network. That's why you are brand partners, right? You are a brand partnered with the brand Young Living. People trust your brand that know you, right? And you are a bridge to create that trust between them and Young Living. So when you are sharing helpful or even revealing personal content, even on a weekly basis, you can grow connection and credibility with people who don't know you well yet, who can come to know you and trust you more. And look, in order to get this done and to be effective with this, you don't need to be constantly online. A little bit of planned content goes a really, really long way. So we actually already created a system back in January to make this easy. So if you followed our swipe file system, you already know how to capture good ideas when they show up, plan a month of content in an hour and schedule it to publish so that you can focus on other things. Now, today, we're gonna show you how to stretch those ideas that you're capturing in your swipe file even further. Now, if you don't know what I'm talking about, we've got a blog post that explains this, that provides you with the swipe file, your whole checklist, how to follow this system. Essentially, if you don't know what a swipe file is, it's an organized place for you to capture ideas so that you can act on them later, right? So if you read a great email, you see a great social post and you say, ooh, I would like to use that as inspiration for something I do in the future. This gives you a place to file it away in an organized fashion. And also, at the same time, in that same place, a way for you to actually develop the content that you will later use and post. It gets you off the hamster wheel of needing to show up and gets you into an intentional place where you've planned to show up and you already know what you're going to say. Alright, so let's talk about repurposing content and I'll actually walk you through what this looks like in a couple of formats here today. So what it is and why it works, repurposing at the end of the day is really just reshaping a piece of content that you've already published or just an idea that you have into many different things, right? So what this is, is essentially reusing, not necessarily verbatim, but turning something into different formats. This is gonna save you time, it multiplies your reach and it helps people actually remember what you said. Because you've probably heard before, most people need to see the same message, not just seven, but 27 times before it actually sticks, because we live in such a distracted time. So what I want you to do when you think about repurposing is to start with a single post. So I want you to find a blog, an email, a social post, or even something that you might have claimed from a resource bundle. Maybe there's something that you particularly love and it's a class that you purchased from one of our content partners, right? And maybe there's an idea that was shared in there that you would like to use and expand upon for something else. So just choose it. It might be something that you created recently or a long time ago. It could also be something that you have received from elsewhere. And we're gonna take that and turn it into at least double, if not quadruple, the amount of content without writing anything from scratch. And your swipe file, if you are using one, is an absolute goldmine for you to find this content to repurpose. So how we spin our content out is as follows. So let's just say we have a post. Maybe I created a blog post about diffusing oils for sleep. And we could take that tip and turn it into a reel that shows our bedtime routine. We could turn it into a story about how we discovered that particular blend that we use. We could create a simple graphic that has the recipe for that blend. We could include a quote about rest and routines. We could even create an FAQ co-post about whether or not lavender is safe for kids or pets, et cetera, right? So there are four types of formats that we can repeat really, really easily when we start to think about how we can take one post and turn it into many. So once you've posted an idea, whether that's on social or elsewhere, where you can reuse it in a couple of different ways. First is story posts, right? Where we can take this idea and then through the lens of say, a personal or behind-the-scenes view, we can talk about that, right? So if we're still on the topic here of repurposing our idea of sharing, diffusing for bedtime, then maybe I am actually doing a story post where I've got a video of me filling my diffuser or it's a scene of a bedroom or something along those lines. And maybe I share a little story about how I used to struggle with sleep and how much my sleep has improved since I've started using this blend. A tip post might be one that again, might reference something along the lines of oils and sleep. Maybe recommending that you plug your diffuser in and start it going about an hour before bedtime so that your brain has the ability to start really taking in those oils and getting you triggered for wind-down behavior, right? Engagement posts are going to be related to polls, questions or addressing myths. So in this case, we could say, you know, something to the effect of a question where we can ask, what's your favorite part of your bedtime routine, right? That would be an engagement post. And then testimonial-style posts are where we can actually share things like results, reviews, maybe snippets of conversations. Maybe a friend shared that they put this blend in the room for their toddler who was staying up late every night, not going to bed on time. And the kid was zonked out and she was finally able to get some sleep, right? So our workflow is as follows for our content. We pick one poster idea. We choose two to four alternate formats, like maybe one of the ones that I just mentioned here. And then schedule them out over several weeks' time. And bonus, if this is related to a blog post that you've written, this is instantly going to get you more exposure for your blog post. Or if you're like Paula and you're doing podcasts, you could send people to your episodes as well. And essentially, what we're doing here is turning that one thing into five things without needing a new idea to show up, right? And we do need to show up consistently. So we're gonna use our swipe file as our repurposing goldmine. And if you are not familiar with swipe files, you will get a crash course in this here in just a bit. Again, like I mentioned before, it's just an organized place to swipe and store ideas that you can use later for your content. That's what a swipe file is. And I've created a version of one for you to use. And we have extensive training on exactly how to use it, how you can capture your ideas and organize them in five minutes a day and then create all the content that you need for a month in an hour, right? So we do have trainings on all of that. I'll show you where to find those in just a bit. So this repurposing goldmine, that is your swipe file, isn't just for new ideas. It is absolutely chock-full of things that you can reuse. So if you've been using your swipe file, remember that even if it feels bare, if you've just got a couple of things that are in there. When you look at that one card, that one idea, know that every single one of those could be five or 10 other things, right? You are not limited. There is an abundance and you have to remember that when you're looking at this stuff. And remember, if you haven't put anything into your swipe file yet, or if you don't have one yet, now's the time to do it. If it worked well before, like something you've shared before, you can share something in a new format. So maybe you had a social post that did particularly well. You could take that same style of social post and plug a new idea from another card into it. Or you could take that same topic and reframe it in a different way, maybe from a more personal angle or a story angle, et cetera, right? So if you want to do even less, know that you can save yourself time. If you do it once, you can reuse what you did before. Templates are key to saving yourself time here. And again, I'll show you some examples of what this looks like. This would be in Canva and there are ways to create templates and use them for these purposes in Get Oiling as well. So save your best post formats as templates later. And essentially, what this looks like in Canva is you reusing past, reusing past Canva files for future ones, right? If we're creating visual stuff. Or if it's just a written post, then you keep that on your Trello board, right? And then you're able to take that and reuse it later. You could also make a reusable structure for story posts, tips or calls to action. Again, this is something you can do with copy in your Trello board, or you can use saved replies and Get Oiling for this. And these templates, at the end of the day, are going to reduce your thinking time and help you to stay consistent. And if you want to reuse and get Oiling, again, if you're not familiar, there's a feature called Saved Replies that allows you to save your copy and your formatting into something that can be plugged into multitudinous places in your account. So you could take a saved reply and send it as one message, like an email to someone. You could take it and pop it into a campaign to build out a series of messages that send out automatically. You could use it to build blog posts, you could use it to build online classes inside your vaults. There's so much you can do with these saved replies. So if you ever find something that's really useful, really helpful to you, maybe an important bit of information, a recipe, a factoid, something that you want to keep and save for later, you can put that into a saved reply. Just make sure that you name it for something that you're gonna be able to remember and search easily for in the future. Because you can use the search feature when you're trying to pull up the saved replies you've created. So repurposing is gonna keep you visible with less effort. You don't need more time. You just need to get your efforts moving further, right? You need to make your time go further by multiplying your efforts. And with a good system like the one I'm about to show you, one post can fuel your brand for days or even weeks. And the goal at the end of the day, it's not to say more, it's just to keep saying what matters more often. It's to take one idea and find five more better, different ways to say the same thing, right? Because that's really what a brand is about. A brand isn't about coming up with something brand new every day. A brand is about repeating its values. And we are brands. We are here today, brands that people trust, right? Brands who will be taken seriously when we give recommendations to our friends and family, right? And that is valuable. And that is what Young Living values, right? Like, that is the measure of how you get paid if you do the work, right? Is that people say yes to you. And all you need to do is get on message and show up on that message consistently, right? So let's go take a look at this in action, starting with your, the blog post here. If you are unfamiliar with the swipe file, with swipe file system, you're gonna want to go here after you're done with this training. If you're here live today, if you're watching this as a replay after you have gone and signed up for Momentum, come back over here and watch this recording and get the swipe file content planning checklist. This is where you're going to see exactly what you're supposed to do, the order you're supposed to do it and how to use this. The whole guide is here. This is your deep dive on instituting one of the most important systems you can have in place in your business. And that is the one where you organize your content. Content is your exposure engine, right? So the swipe file and content planner is a free template in Trello, if you have Trello. And all you need is a free account. You do not need to pay for Trello to use this. When you claim that Trello file, you are then When you claim that Trello file, you are then going to be able to, if I could find my Trello board here, you're going to get a Trello board that looks just a little bit like this. All right. So this is your Trello board. This is your Swipe File and Content Planner. Yours is going to look a little more bear than this. I've used this for a couple of demonstrations already. But what we're doing here essentially is capturing ideas in different buckets, different categories. And the ones that you'll start with are your ideas for email, your ideas for social posts, your ideals for long-form content. This could be blog posts, long YouTube videos, podcasts, and even ideas that you want for your website, or for FAQs, or for building out parts of your website, or your blog, or sorry, not your blog, your customer education in your vault, right? There's lots of different ways that you can expand this. So Trello is what's called a Kanban board, and these are all called lists, right? We've got content ideas, drafts in progress, scheduled published, et cetera, and so on. These are all lists. And if you wanted to create a new list, you could just click here and give your list a name, and you have a new list, right? And once you have your list, which you will start with all the ones that you need, you could add more that you want if you wish, you're going to have cards. And these cards are where we capture our ideas. Yeah, it's like digital Post-its, but imagine if a digital Post-it could unfold in an order of magnitude into something gigantic. Like, imagine if each of these Post-its were actually an encyclopedia, an interactive encyclopedia. That's what that would be, because, and this is the reason why I like to use Trello for this. So just to give an example here, if I want, if I realize that, you know what? I want to talk about self-care for moms who don't have time. And maybe I saw an Instagram post where somebody like put a really cool graphic up. Maybe it was like an infographic. I would actually take that image, and I would attach it right here, because I want to use that as inspiration when I create content next, right? So that is what I would put here. And there's actually prompts here if you use our templates that'll show you exactly what to do. Now, I'm actually going to, for the purpose of repurposing here, I'm going to go find something that I've already used. So what you see here on this side of the board is like when we're actually working on something, we're going to move it over here, right? So here's the ideas we collect and organize. But over here, this is where we're working, right? So here's the things I want to work on next. And when I start working on them, I move them in here. When they are scheduled, they're ready, I put them over here, right? And I can actually see, because I put dates on them, when I publish them. So these would be like blog posts, for instance. So these are my drafts. Now, let's go find something. Here we go. Five natural hacks to boost your family's energy levels, because we all need a little more pep. I have my blog post content in here. So here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to go and grab this. I'm just copying the contents of this blog post that I already wrote. It's in my swipe file. I'm going to come back over to Get Oiling. And I'm going to go use Write With AI to help me. All right. So I'm going to click Write With AI, and I'm going to say, please come up with five new ways to use this information, or use the information in this blog post. And maybe I'll also say some new ways to use this information. This can be social posts, events, or additional blog posts. All right. So there we go. I have pasted the majority of that post in there. I'm going to click Write. Give it a moment, and it's going to come up with the five new ways to use this information. What I'm going to do is when I get those, if I like them, I'm going to come back over to my swipe file and pop them in as ideas. All right. So here we go. I'm going to actually expand this a bit and shrink this one. All right. So the first one, Social Media Challenge Online Workshop Family Event Email Series. Additional blog posts. I would like some social posts for this. So let me come back up here and re-prompt. How about? So I'm going to say five new ways to share the information in this blog post on social media. All right. Let's see what we come up with here. I'm going to focus on social posts for now. And then what we're going to do is come over to Canva, and we're going to turn those into new content after we put them into our Trello board. Here we go. So interactive polls and quizzes, before and after challenges, live demonstration or workshop, testimonial posts, infographic or carousel posts. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and grab this here. I'm going to copy this. And I'm not going to go start creating right away, because remember, we have an organization tool. Life happens, and this is actually why we drop the ball all the time, right? It's because we try to do everything all at once and not give ourselves grace and space. And so if we could be more intentional in how we work, we can get a lot more done. So I'm going to use a social media post. It's going to be a social media post. I'm going to create from template. And it's the social media post template I'm going to use. And this is going to be a testimonial post, and this is energy hacks, because that was the idea I was working from. And you can see it's right here. I could paste the information here. And then I would go back and repeat this. Create a new card for each of these, right? So I'm not going to go do all of that right now, but here's what I will do. I'm going to decide to go ahead and start working on this one. So I'm going to bring it over here to my content ideas. And then I am going to go back to Write With AI and Get Oiling, and I'm going to ask for copy for this. So here, I'm going to grab the testimonial post. All right. Oops. Forgive me. Let me come back over here. Here we go. All right. So write, copy for a compelling testimonial post that fits the following description. Use a fun upbeat tone. There we go. I will click Write. I will let it come up with that, and then I will go ahead and ready my Canva. What I want to do is maybe turn this into an image-based testimonial post. And so here, I would go to Instagram. And I want a template. No, that's not what I want to do. I'm going to go create. There we go. Then type in Instagram post. Voila. Here we go. Love it. We could do a square. We could do a taller one. I think I'm going to use a taller one, just because this is going to provide more space for the quote. We'll hop back over into Get Oiling. And let's see. Oh, I love this. Oh, this is quite long and absolutely loaded with emojis, if that's what you're into. So I'm going to copy that, actually. And before I start moving, because I might want to edit this. I might not love it, and that might be the case for you as well. I'm going to go ahead and paste in the content here. There it is. And here's where I can actually keep that and come back and edit this, right? So I might decide here. I'm going to grab this. So I'm going to say I started using, let's see, I started using citrus fresh, citrus fresh every morning. And wow, it's like a bottle of sunshine in a bottle. Our home feels more alive, and we've got the pep back in our step. The kids even make it a game to guess which oil we're using each day. Pure magic. Love it. I'm going to copy this right here, and that's what I'm going to use. And yes, you can put in your prompt to tell it to not use emojis. Some people like the emojis, though, you know? All right. So I've actually decided on the copy I want to use. I'm just going to pop right over here into Canva. Hit Paste. Obviously, this is not what we want. We want it to be a lot larger. And let's actually, before we even do anything else, go here and type in quote. Yes, look at that. It's so sunshiny. I think that's probably the one. Yes, I think that's the one. We're going to use this one. Replace the current page. And I think for this, we just need to make this a little bigger. And here. And I'm actually not even going to use the the name, the product name. All right. So this is too long. So I'm going to go back, and I'm going to make some modifications. Get back over here into the dashboard. And this is where I can say, please shorten this so it can better fit inside an image quote. Retain the tone in the original. All right. Paste. Kind of lose the emoji here. Don't really need it. So I'll give that just a moment. I love it. There it is. Check that out. All right. So I'm going to copy clipboard. Hop back over here to Instagram, and let's paste here. Love it. There we go. And here, you would obviously put your own handle. I would also likely increase some line spacing here. Except for here, I would decrease it. There we go. Right? So you can see that we have now turned this into content. Now, you could pop this into whatever your favorite planning tool is, if you'd like to be a bit more effective with your posting. If you're using social media, the algorithms do favor people who are actually online live. So it is going to benefit you to actually show up to post as often as possible. But look, I'm not actually running over to post right now. Let's come back over here, and I am going to put that image that I just created and pop it right onto this post, right? So I'm going to go ahead and decide, because I'm going to do this in batches. I'm going to post this when I release my blog post about daily diffusing. Next Monday, I'm going to release it there and remind myself that that's when it needs to go out. Here is where I might also maybe change my copy for the post itself. So I'm going to delete what's here and actually come back over to Canva. And I really am walking you through this process exactly as I would do it. I would just make sure that you, I would make sure that you do this in a batched way, right? So I would go and do five of each of the things that I've shown you, right? So get five ideas, put five cards onto your Trello board. Once you have the five cards on your Trello board, go and get the copy for each of the five cards on your Trello board. Then go make a Canva file for each of the five cards on your Trello board. And then you, you know, plan, schedule, post whatever the five cards content, right? So I'm going to go and copy this, and I'm going to ask Write With AI to provide copy for the post, right? So I'm going to say this is the copy inside a quote graphic. Excuse me. I'll be posting on Instagram. Provide caption, provide a caption for the post and hashtags to use. Click Write. Here we go. There's my Instagram caption right here. Let me go ahead and just grab all of this. And again, what am I doing? I'm not running to Instagram. I'm coming right back over to my Trello board so that when I want to make my post, I have everything that I need, right? So this is scheduled and ready. I'm actually going to move it over here to the very top. So I know that on July 21st, I need to post this on Instagram, or if you put this into a scheduler, you've got that there. If it's done, you want to mark it complete, you can do that, right? If you've scheduled it already. But this is what you do, one of these things at a time, right? So you go and you get your five ideas. You put your five ideas into cards on Trello. So if I wanted to maybe create a new blog post for, so I started with the idea, remember, of five, was it this one? Five hacks to boost your, was that the, yeah, I think that was the one that I used. Five hacks to boost your family's energy levels. So if I had five hacks to boost my family's energy levels, let me actually go look and see, what are the five things it talks about there? I could, from there, actually go and and come up with the five ideas I could use to break up into different concepts, right? So if one of my hacks for boosting my family's energy levels is cutting out sugar, then maybe that really deserves a longer post, right? So this is going to be a long-form content. This is how to cut out sugar for families with kids. This doesn't need to be clever yet. This is just an idea. I'm going to actually move this over here, because I want to be, I want to start working on this. Now, if I want to do this, I want to think about the approach, right? So I'm just going to go ahead and pop in some ideas. If there are some links, some studies, et cetera, I could put those into here. And again, I could do this over and over and over again. And this was born out of the five tips that I shared. One of the tips is cutting out sugar. Well, what if I did a blog post on cutting out sugar in a way that's actually sustainable for families that have kids, right? So you could put in your ideas here. And then, of course, again, if you can talk about sugar in a blog post and ways to cut it out, that's going to create five more tips for you that you could go share on social media, right? How do you deal with getting kids off of sugar when it's summertime and everybody is running to the ice cream truck, right? That's something that you could talk about in a social media post. So everything that you do provides the opportunity for you to be able to create more from the idea you've already generated. And you've got this handy tool right here with Write With AI and Get Oiling, rather, that's going to help you get all of this done, consolidated, and then finally organized into a board where you don't have to go and rush to create right now, but you can have everything ready for you when it's time for it to be ready, right? So if you guys have questions, excuse me, about how to do this, how to get any of this done, if you would like some clarity on how your Trello board works or how this process would work to repurpose your content, feel free, pop those into the Q and A here. If you would like to chat through any of this, including questions about anything else that we've talked today, feel free to pop those into the Q and A, or raise your hand if you would like that, if you'd like to actually talk through anything. So Allison had a question here about saved replies. If you've got a lot of saved replies, what's the best way to organize them? So the best way to organize for the saved replies feature, because I don't believe that we have collections for saved replies yet. No, we don't currently have collections for saved replies. I think that's on the wishlist, though. So the best way to organize saved replies is with naming conventions, right? So you want to make sure that you are using consistent naming structures for everything that you create, right? So if you know that what you are creating is a tip, or if it's a newsletter component, then it needs to have the name "tip" in it, or it needs to have the name "newsletter" in it, right? So that you could go in and find everything that's related. So if I type in the word "newsletter", you actually see that there are templates that are built into Get Oiling. But, you know, if there are different sections that you've created, and I'll just go ahead and show you that here, because this is an example of where you can repurpose your content in action, when you are perhaps sending a message out to your team. So let's just pretend that we are in the middle of writing a message to our, to our current list. I'm going to type in newsletter and find my newsletter people and write them an email. Now, let's say I have created something. I've said something. I like what I have to say. And before I hit Send on this, I realized, you know what? I could use this again. This could be really helpful for me in the future. This could save me time. If I could just say all of this again the next time that it needs to be said, I need that, right? So that is where we create a saved reply from an existing message, right? So saved replies is here for you to pop in all kinds of stuff that you might have said before, or if you even want to borrow some of the built-in templates that we've created for you here. or if you, you even want to borrow some of the built-in templates that we've created for you here as well. So you could actually create a saved reply from the very message you are composing, right? So I can create a saved reply from message and this is going to be uh, welcome to the team. And I'm going to say, okay. Now I am going to be done with that. Maybe I need to send out a new welcome message to uh, you know, to announce to the team who our new people are. We're going to go back over here to send a message on another day. And I can go again to my newsletter people, write the email, type in, welcome to the team. Well, I need to refresh my page, forgive me, hold on. Let me leave here real quick so it'll find that when I pull it up. There we go, that's going to go to newsletter. And I'll type in my welcome to the team, there it is. And exactly what we said before is going to pop in right there. But what if that's just part of what I need to share? Maybe I need to also um, you know, pop in that we're about to go live. Hey, I can pop that in there as well, right? So these are all options that we have access to uh, when we're using saved replies. And here's the cool thing, saved replies can be used in Get Oiling in a lot of different places. So you've just seen me do this uh, in a message. You could also add these saved replies into campaign messages. You can pull up saved replies and plug them into blog posts. You can even plug them into lessons in your online classes. So that is another way, you can take one thing that you did and redo it many times without having to reinvent the wheel. So that's how you organize and of course, how you create and use more of those saved replies. Collections in general, these are going to apply to very specific features inside of Get Oiling, things like your videos, I think are, are going to be a particularly great example of utilizing collections. I think this account here actually has a good amount of them. This is our main Get Oiling account. So we've got, actually you can see that I haven't really done the best job of putting these into collection. So you can actually see here, let me go ahead and create a new collection. And um, I'm going to add collection and here's all those videos from when we did Bootcamp earlier in the year. And it's just a way for you to um, all right, so now I can go back to my videos. And then I can go here and I can select Bootcamp. There we go, 2025 videos and change the collection. And so this way, you're actually able to go through and find, for instance, all of your videos for a particular uh, set. You can, because if you've got a lot of videos, you want to be able to pull them all up and, and swap them out or deal with them or whatever, right? So that's the whole idea of a collection, is that you're able to organize images. This is, I think, even more powerful, right? Because if you look, we've got so many different types of images that we use. So these would be icons that I use on a page. These would be images that I share via email or in a blog post. These are backgrounds for sections of a website. And when I'm in like an editor and trying to choose an image, I don't want to scroll through every single photo I've uploaded recently to be able to find the thing I'm looking for. And that's really what collections are all about, right? So here's icons for marketing pages, look at that. Those all got uploaded and, and I actually bulk uploaded all of these together because I knew that when I was building this part of this page, oh man, it was going to be a lot. And then the next page I wanted to build, I didn't want to have to scroll through 20 different images to be able to find the one that I'm looking for. That's the real power of collections, right? That's uh, providing you a way to get straight to what you're looking for. Because again, like if you are um, maybe you are, and again, I'll just pretend like I am going to send a new message and I want to add an image to the message. Right, so if I come over here and I click insert image and I browse, the default is just to scroll through whatever our latest everything is. But if I wanted to go straight to my icons, I could find them, right? Or if I had another list that was going straight to uh, my email-based images or my newsletter headers or whatever I have put together organizationally, that's going to give me a shortcut to do that. All right, I don't know if Trello connects with Metro Cool. I don't know what Metro Cool is. It sounds like it's a post scheduler. Generally speaking, I don't know, I mean, Trello can do a lot of things. I don't, well, I, I use paid Trello for purposes other than what we're discussing here today. But um, you don't need a paid Trello to like do any of the things that I, I've shared with you, to use that board to, to keep yourself organized for your content. All you need is that free uh, Trello account with that board that we've created for you. Now, if you wanted to power it up, there are lots of power-ups in Trello, but that is where the road ends with me being able to help you with Trello because I'm completely unfamiliar. But if you do use a post scheduler or an aggregator like that, I would actually be more inclined to connect it with Canva because Canva actually has a post, a, a post scheduler. So I mean, why not just use that if you're creating visual content in Canva anyway? All right, it won't post to groups though. I think that's, that the group's AI and Facebook has changed uh, within the last year or so. And so, or AI, um, anyway, the groups have changed and uh, they don't support um, APIs, what I was looking for, I was missing a letter. The group's API has changed and um, such that they no longer support third parties integrating in with them. All right, uh, if there are more questions, feel free to go ahead and share them before we get going. Guys, if you are not signed up for Momentum yet, remember it's $97 through the end of this weekend. It goes up to 197 after that, it will still be worth it at that point. This again is going to get you a half-day workshop, weekly pop-in office hours, pre-recorded short videos that, that send you right into targeted action. And of course, uh, those monthly um, accountability calls where we can level up. The date is going to be in August, very likely late August for the half-day workshop. That's not when we start everything, but it's when we get into uh, the big do day. And uh, this is going to be uh, decided after we poll everyone who's committed and attending. So we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that this is going to account for everyone's schedule. If it does not, we're going to have two of them, right? So just know that we're committed to making sure that um, that you're going to be able to get onto that live call because this really is about being hands-on uh, and being present. And know that those, these dates are going to be, you're going to have a say in, in when these dates are, right? And if for whatever reason, there are some that you can't make, know that the pop-in office hours are going to be at different times of day and on different days of the week, right? So if you're consistently unavailable on Thursdays at noon, like when we have these calls, there's going to be other times that you'll be able to pop in. And of course, again, if your schedule is just so crazy or you are on the other side of the globe and it's difficult to make these things work, we're going to figure it out, all right? If you have questions for me, feel free, ashley@getoiling.com. And remember again, like this really is about pushing through whatever block has been there for you in the past. If the block has been confidence in using your tech, we're going to blow through that together, hands-on together. And you're going to get into all of the action that you need to get the results that you're looking for. And we can do it with your team, right? So if you want to bring your team with you, all they need is a Get Oiling account. So get started uh, this weekend for that price goes up. And of course, we look forward to seeing you uh, next week in person in Salt Lake City. And definitely look for the recorded training that's going to be going out next week as well. Hope you guys have a great week, uh, safe travels and we'll see you at convention.